Okay, I call this meeting of the Williston School Board to order and we'll accept nominations for Board Chair. All in favor? Sorry, any other nominations?
Yeah, railroad me wide enough.
Motion passed. Congratulations, Kevin. I'll turn the meeting over to you now.
Thank you. So, can I have, so we'll run right down the list here. So we have Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, then Policy Committee, Negotiations Committee, FAPAC, PBIS, and then the three CSSU School Board groups. Okay? So, let's start with Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations from the floor for Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Deb if you'd like to continue.
Second it.
Great. Any other nominations? Wonderful, all in favor. Aye. Motion passes.
Oh, here you go.
Oh, you just made it. Hey, congratulations Chairman, not just kidding.
I should've waited to get that one on camera.
You got him to stop.
We're just getting to the good ones that we were gonna punish you, I mean, oh, wait for.
You came in the nick of time.
It was gonna be the last time I come late.
That's right. So, the next position that we need to fill is the position of Clerk and Giovanna, you did it last year, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, do we have nominations or discussion? Does anybody want to take this on again?
Nominate Giovanna.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so, we have committee appointments now. Like I said, we have a rep to the Policy Committee at the CSSU level, we have a rep for negotiations, that I hope we can reaffirm, and we have a rep for FAPAC Committee and I think, well, I, let's, I think it's appropriate that we discuss these. If anybody doesn't want to continue to do this or has an interest in stepping in, this is kind of a good time to discuss it. So Giovanna, you were on policy last year. Josh, I assume, at least from my opinion, it makes sense for you to continue in your role as our negotiations rep. And Deb, you had mentioned to me that you'd be interested in stepping off of FAPAC this year.
If somebody else is interested in doing this, I can continue. I just wanna throw it out to anybody else.
Do you wanna swap with policy?
Um, I don't. The team for policy doesn't work for me. Sorry.
I was trying to get your ho-ho for tuna fish.
Really?
Oh, there you go, okay.
All right, okay.
Oh, great.
So, okay.
Great.
Now, just for understanding, that means that I have to go to all the FAPAC meetings?
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah, that's the tough, that's, that's the time period, that's the tough part.
And they happen to happen the same days that we have these meetings, don't they, on Wednesdays?
No, no, Thursday.
Day after.
Usually, usually the Thursday morning.
They're always the day, they follow the board meeting.
The day after.
Yeah.
And then what time are these things?
Eight fifteen to about ten.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yes.
Give it a try, that'd be great.
Great.
I'll second.
Yeah, I don't know how, how much one of those means.
So, these meetings are once a month.
Mm-hmm.
They are, usually.
Um, and they're normally here, excuse me, and so I think they're like an hour and they're early in the morning, seven thirty.
Okay.
Seven thirty or eight.
Well, that's a good, gets me out of the house for getting the kids ready for school.
When it gets warmer, you can ride your bike over.
There you go.
Yeah, exactly. I get hit by one of the students.
Great, so, so, okay, so great, so, this is gonna be, I'll get official on this in a second here.
And Giovanna, I could fill in in a pinch, I could be.
Oh, thank you, okay, hey Deb. I was more concerned thinking it was Wednesday still, and two days in a week, two meetings in a day.
Well, it is kind of rough, because it is Wednesday night, Thursday morning.
And, and that's all right, good.
So, can I have, can I have a motion for, from the floor to nominate a slate of Kevin Broschew to appoint to the Policy Committee, Josh to continue on Negotiations Committee, and Giovanna to appoint to the FAPAC Committee? Except, we missed one. I can write down here, might as well kill them all. PBIS rep.
So, the PBIS.
Is it kind of?
It's, yeah, because it was, that was, I think, created when we were implementing this, right? It was, I think, three years ago. And so since then, because it's now part of the school program, you know, I have not been a part of the meetings.
Okay, do you feel it should continue on?
I don't, I don't think it's probably that necessary at this time.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
I mean, it's, I don't wanna belittle the program, because I think it's done excellent work.
Oh, super important, yeah.
Yes, but I think it's kind of running like a well-oiled machine, so. Okay, so we'll dissolve that. Great, so, can I have a nomination for, as I stated, for, to appoint Kevin Broschew to the Policy Committee, Josh Diamond to continue on Negotiations Committee, and Giovanna to be appointed to the FAPAC Committee?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So, the final thing we have here are our representatives to the CSSU School Board. We hold three seats. So, I think, I think the question is this. From what I've heard from everybody who's currently serving, they'd like to continue, but if you guys feel you want to take part, let's have that discussion.
Probably, though, for another year.
Okeydoke.
My voice, I.
Okay, that's fine, you know, I don't.
More to do here.
Yep. Okay, great, so, can I have a nomination to appoint Kevin Mara, Deb Baker Moody, and Joshua Diamond as our three CSSU reps?
I'd like to nominate the three of you.
Great.
I'll second it.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
All right.
We have a reconstituted board. Yeah, go grab dinner while I write this down here, if you'd like. Okay. I'll wait for Josh to come back, but item number three is adjustments to the agenda, and we do have one. We need to add an action matter, an action item, so we'll add eight point four and it will be a discussion and decision about the last day of school for students and teachers.
Oh, I was wondering about that.
Yes.
Very important.
It's the one everyone wants us to take care of, so. So we will have a discussion and action on that. Did he, is he gonna choose the peanut butter and jelly?
I got mine, so I'm okay.
I was switching out some of the chips.
Great, so that brings us to item number four, Audience and Communications, and I'm going to assume, because there are no audience here, we don't have any, that brings us to item number five, Presentations, of which we have none this one. So that's gonna shorten us right up. So that brings us to Reports to the Board, item number six. So Walter, can you bring us up to state of the, state of the school?
So, I think, a couple of things that we were talking about before, that we had our science fair for the grade seven and eight yesterday, it was, it was a different fair, it was an engineering contest fair, and there's a full kind of write-up with results in the bill. The kids actually, they just loved it. And it was obvious, because they had to solve real problems. They got to choose which one, and then they had to solve them. One of them was, you had to have a rubber band car, and you made, had to make it go across the floor exactly three feet and stop on top of an X. And so they had to design it so that it would do that. And they had months to prepare and think about, you know, what causes it to happen, how do you line the bands, what do you make it out of, and all that sort of thing, and then they actually did it, and there were teams. It was all set up about four people on a team, all the seventh and eighth graders participated. They get to choose one of four, kind of contest, and it was really exciting, and it was really great to watch, and the kids loved it. And you'll see, there was a parent whose son came home after that and just was so excited, and we, the quote from her is in the bill also. Just that it worked out really well. The kids just loved it, they were really well behaved, and because they had to sit and watch as other people's teams were going up and trying out their, whatever they had built, and then they had like, they usually could do it three times, they could make adjustments, and then go back and try it again, but it was really just a great engineering feat. And the other thing that's coming up is that science, the new science standards are gonna have a lot more to do with engineering, so this was perfect, it just fit right along with it, and.
Good.
Kids did a great job. They were really excited.
Just a quick question, what's the typical format for the science fair you have, is it?
You have triads, students, like you put up this tri-fold, and students will choose different topics that they would like to report on, and then they put pictures up and write a report and things like.
You have judges that.
Yep, we have judges.
So this was a little different, whereas you have kind of a very specific goal and.
You had a specific goal of what you had to do, you had plenty of freedom to kind of, what am I gonna use for materials? How am I gonna design it? How big is it gonna be? What is it gonna look like? You know, all that sort of thing. And then they went at it, and it was really, I have to say, it was really interesting. One of them was that you had to slide down this, this string, you had to make this device to slide down a string that started probably about thirteen feet up in the air and ended on the, on the floor of the auditorium, went all the way across the stage and then landed, and what was interesting is, wasn't how fast it could get there, it had to get there in eight seconds.
Ooh.
Oh, in exactly eight seconds?
Yes.
That's good.
And so the closest to exactly eight seconds won, so it's not about how fast or slow it's going, it's like, how do you time it so it does it in exactly eight seconds? The girl who won, girl who won, her team, finished in eight point oh one. So.
Are you surprised it's a woman, is that what you said?
No, actually, we're not, because if you see any, if you study any of the, the scores we're getting now, you're gonna see that girls are doing really well in science and math now, and a lot of the, our girls did really well in the competitions, and it was, and it was really fun. The kids had a great time. They were cheering for each other, they were cheering for, you know.
That's a good sign.
Things when it didn't work, it's like, come on, we can do it, come on. So it was interesting, you know, it was a really fun kind of day. Lasted all day.
Yeah.
One after another, after another, all day long. Reward ceremonies at two thirty, and they got on the buses. It was the whole day for seventh and eighth graders. So it was great. So that was probably the biggest thing, I think, other than the snow and things like that.
Just one question for you, just off the top of my head, I was thinking about it as I was driving in the driveway of the school today. When are you gonna start putting mount bits and stuff for paving projects?
We, I think the first thing, we're gonna do this pretty quickly, in fact, we just talked about the last FMR. We believe that we can coordinate with the town on the paving. If we do, we'll get the blacktop for a lot less.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, I saw today the town sent out an RFP for road construction.
Yeah, so we're, what we're doing is, we're gonna try to attach onto them.
Excellent.
And that will bring the materials in at a lower cost.
Because, you know, anecdotally, to me, it looks like the roads are just getting pummeled this evening.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Oh, yeah. Everywhere.
They're terrible.
Yeah.
We have a huge pothole as you come in at WCS on one area.
Yep.
Out in the parking lot. Found it today.
Found it yesterday.
We have, the sidewalk in the front is off by at least almost six inches.
Yeah.
Because of frost.
Yep. Okay, good, good, great. Any other questions for Walter? Can we move on? Thank you, Walter. Discussion matters, seven dot oh, seven one, town meeting debrief. Budget passed. Yeah, no, I, for those of you who weren't there, the, the meeting format is such that, you know, we end up going, we, we present our budget later on in the evening, after the town does a presentation, so it gets to be a long evening. Went till ten o'clock. And CBU goes after us, so, you know, there's two ways to look at it. Either people show up for the town meeting, you know, are gonna bust out of there and not stick around and, you know, or maybe you're just not gonna get, left a message out that you wanna get. But regardless, I, I think the presentation was very straightforward. Everybody, I think, my, my impression of the feeling at the meeting was, everybody felt we did a great job keeping it at zero percent, and everybody's just not happy with the state, and, and they made that clear to our representatives that were there that evening. So. Yeah, and after all that, as you very well know, we, we had everything passed, so, just congratulations to all of you.
If I may observe, hats off to our Chair. I thought it was striking that compared to the municipal budget, the Chair of our Board is the one who presents the budget, and you did a very nice job.
Oh, thank you.
And had questions from the floor.
Yep.
In a great way, so.
Yeah, it was the first time I did that. I usually don't get nervous about stuff, but that one was a little. So.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
You didn't show.
So, that was town meeting. Communication, Boards Corners. You know, Kevin, I apologize, you had thrown out a, hey, we should, we should send something out and thank the town and the observer, and I never got back to you. I think we should definitely do that. That'd be great. I think just a short, you know, a short Boards Corner. You know, it's never too late.
Never too late, say.
Never am.
So you're.
And it's not out of people's minds right now, because, you know.
Yeah, I won't touch on the sensitive stuff.
Yeah, I, yeah, leave that to those who want to. So that's what we have for Discussion Matters, so that brings us to item eight, Action Matters. So the first one we have is to adopt the two thousand fourteen and fifteen regional calendar. So, can I have a motion from the floor, and then we'll discuss?
Make a motion to adopt the calendar for next year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen?
Yeah, the regional calendar.
Regional calendar.
So what's the tip?
So that's why I wanted to get to discussion. So here's, here's how this works. Basically, we, in a sense, we have no choice but to adopt the regional calendar of Chippewa County, because the coordination between the technical centers, like in Essex and South, and Burlington and so on, all the high schools that feed to those have to have the same schedule. And then it kind of naturally progresses down into K to eights, kind of need to follow that too. So there's a regional calendar that basically outlies all the days that really the high school has to attend. And then from there, they can plug in and we can plug in either, you know, professional development days or student-teacher conference days and that sort of thing, and that, we haven't done that yet. We need to approve this, and then we can give it back over to administration, and they'll go through this and come back to us, I think either next month, it may even be, is it next month? You'll come back to us next month with their recommendation for our calendar to adopt for our school system. Okay? So, but by, but by mandate, we have to approve it.
I suggest we approve it.
Yeah, so, with, anybody, there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Eight dot two, affirm the code of conduct. We do this every year at this meeting when we reconstitute the Board. This is a, a document and a recommendation from the School Boards Association, and it's just a best practice that we, that we follow every year, so I hope you took a moment to review it, it was in your packet materials.
Yep.
So if I can have a motion to affirm?
I make a motion to affirm the code of conduct.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Eight dot three, so we have a personnel issue here, a new hire for Guidance Counselor. Traditionally, we don't go into executive session for this, so Walter, I'd like to turn it over to you and give us a rundown.
So. Yep, Kevin asked me if I'd fill in some details, because, you know, this is an important position.
Yeah.
In the school, so the person we're recommending is Shannon Baker. I'm gonna kind of break down, what did the process look like, how many candidates, things like that, and what made her outstanding, so.
Is this a new position, or is this a?
No, no, this is Carol Baker's retirement.
Okay, that's right.
So the committee was made up of an administrator, the other guidance counselor, two, three, four teachers, and one five A teacher. The characteristics that we were looking for were upper elementary and middle school experience, a licensed guidance counselor, because there are other kinds of licenses, such as social workers, things like that, that we wanted a guidance counselor, understands developmentally, the ASCA, which is American School Counselor Association, what their model of what a counselor is about, does, that's kind of like the gold standard. Understands prevention measures, because guidance starts with working on prevention kinds of things, like when you talk about drug and alcohol use and all that, it's like, let's start on prevention before we start on, you know, after the fact that they're already doing something. It's skilled in, they're skilled in intervention, so we wanted somebody who was very skilled at helping somebody who's maybe into things that they really need some help on, with some guidance. Know how to work with children and families in crisis, knowledgeable about PBIS, or school climate in general, and how that works. Experience with ESTs, which is, it's a group that meets that really discusses a child in more depth when there's a problem, and the teachers are trying to solve it, don't understand that process. Demonstrates creativity, and the examples that were given that Williston uses and are unique to Williston is like the World of Difference Training for Leadership, the WISH program where our older students get out of the elementary school, Lunch Buddies, where they get to, a student gets to meet with somebody who, an adult, you know, who can really listen to and care about them in particular, so we have a lot of creative things we've done, so they think about that, and they're very creative in themselves. Has had experience working with teams, because we're a team-based system, and demonstrates technology skills, because we want everybody we hire to be able to use technology. We had fifty-three applicants. We did fourteen phone interviews to kind of get a screening, and then we did six interviews face-to-face. At the end of the interviews face-to-face, we always ask them to do a writing prompt, so that we can see what kinds of writing skills they have and so forth, and they had to write a parent newsletter for, like, the bill. They had to write an article. So I interviewed the candidate for an hour after that. There were a couple of things in her resume I just thought were really outstanding, and one of them, she, I'm quoting her, "Building relationships is about having a sincere empathy for someone's experience as well as proving that you are dependable. School-aged children have the purest read of a person's sincerity." And I thought that was a really true statement. They know it.
Yeah.
Immediately. And then, when she went to, she's coming from Montpelier, when she went to Montpelier, there were some questions and issues about program improvement, and she says, "By listening, observing, and collecting data through surveys, within my first year, I had a clear sense of some areas of improvement." So she was able to take the information and, and make it become real, and make the changes that parents were hoping for, which I think is being, you know, responsive to other people and their needs. She has great experiences, she's from the Montpelier, she's working currently in the Montpelier Public Schools. She's worked at the Champlain Valley School, and, which is in Burlington. She's worked at the Edmonds Elementary School as an intern, and she's worked at the Charlotte Central School as an intern. So she's got a wide range of, you know, experiences from different socioeconomic backgrounds and different communities to bring to us. Degrees, she has a, an administrative license, she got a four-point-zero GPA during her studies. She has a University of Vermont Master of Science in Counseling, she got a three-point-nine GPA, and she's a graduate, bachelor's degree from Selva Regina University in Newport, Rhode Island, with a Bachelor of Arts and a major in psychology, a minor in theater with a GPS of three-point-five. And I just say the GPS, because I always say we want the smartest people we can find working in our schools. And a couple of other things, I can just read a couple of these. I always look at, what are some of the statements in the letters of reference? I can just read a couple of paragraphs to kind of sum it up. Shannon will be an ideal guidance counselor for your school. She brings a wealth of understanding and knows instinctively and from a quiet knowledge what is right and good for children. She is the type of professional that we need to serve students, parents, staff, and faculty in our school. That was written by Owen Bradley, who is a principal in the Montpelier School District. It is with these things in mind, there was a list on the top, I highly recommend Shannon Baker for any guidance position. Her departure will leave a huge hole in our school community, but you will gain one of the most dedicated, intelligent, professional educators I've come to know in my years of teaching. This is from a teacher. I am confident that your educational community will be a place, a better place because of her. This is a teacher from Montpelier in the four-five, in a four-five grade. And the last one is, Shannon is a wonderful person who works hard, and would be a great addition to any school organization. Her professional integrity combined with her qualities I listed above will meet the highest standards set by any institution. I strongly recommend Shannon for any job she is pursuing. She is one of the finest individuals I've had the opportunity to work with, and is someone who I have the most, the utmost respect and admiration. And we feel that we are, what really is, you know, helpful to us, is that we get into the pool, you could say, early, because there are a lot of people hiring guidance counselors right now, and we lost a couple of candidates during process, but we found that we really have a winner with her, and I think the whole committee feels extremely excited about having her come to Williston.
Does she have experience in guidance counseling?
Oh, yes.
She does, okay.
Yes, she does.
Sure.
Yes, now she has definitely a number of years of experience.
Yeah, that I did see.
In both the upper grades and the, and the three, four area too.
That's awesome.
She sounds like a great candidate, thank you for sharing a little bit of the process with us.
One question with regards to the, the document that was passed out. I don't know if there's a typo here, but it appears that she's a school counselor for Montpelier Public Schools from July two thousand and present.
Oh, I saw that, yeah, I was gonna ask that.
And then head teacher of schoolroom at the New Beginnings Child Care Center, June eleventh, present, so.
It might be a typo. Because I have her resume right here.
Because I didn't quite get how she could be in St. John'sburg, I figured at the same time, it's like a feat of space-time.
I think it's a bit, because the other one comes up later.
Substitute.
Her resume listed as present, it's possible that she's not full-time in Montpelier, and she could be in two districts?
It's a substitute.
No, that's possible.
Yeah.
Quarter-time and does a quarter-time, so.
It's possible.
I, I'm very impressed by the rundown, but I guess that has me somewhat concerned. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing from you that she's a really experienced guidance counselor, getting lots of recommendations from the Montpelier folks. You know, whether she was there full-time or part-time to me is, is germane to, to this.
So here's what the rest of the sentence says. "I am the head of the school-age classroom from mid-June to late-August per our summer vacation schedule."
Okay.
Okay.
She's full-time in Montpelier, she works summers at this New Beginning Child Care Center.
Got it. Excellent. Great. A motion?
Make a motion that we accept Shannon Baker as the permanent guidance, it's a permanent, right? Permanent position.
As permanent as they get.
Yes, permanent.
I'll, I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. And so, that brings us to eight four, which we just added, which is a discussion and action on the last day for students and teachers in school for the year. So, this wouldn't have been a discussion until last week. Here's how I understand it, and, help me out if I, if I don't get this right. But right now, we're, we're at the point with the number of school days that we have in the calendar that if we have no more school days this year, we're good.
No more snow days.
No more snow days. We have no more school days, we're really good.
You have to, you actually have to have one.
Oh, we have to waive one.
You have to waive one.
Right now, we have.
And come back for one in order to be in compliance.
Got it.
The state.
I told you I was gonna get you right to this.
Don't need to go ahead. The state requires that you're in school for one hundred and seventy-five days. You're, you have a hundred and seventy-six day calendar because of the trade days for prayer conferences and two professional development days for Common Core. So that brought you one seventy-six, you had two snow days, that dropped you to one seventy-four. So our recommendation is that instead of ending school on June twelfth, which was a Thursday, that you end school on June thirteenth, and waive the kids coming back on June sixteenth, and make that just a teacher day. So you'll still have had a hundred and seventy-five student days, which would be in compliance.
Okay, so let me say that back to you, just so I understand it. There was a teacher day scheduled for. There was a teacher day scheduled for Friday essentially?
Uh, Fri-, at least Friday, maybe even Monday. I'd have to look.
One day after school ends. The day after school ends, no matter when it is, is always a teacher day.
Right, so we're just extending that.
They'll have two days instead of one and the students will just make up one of the days. Because getting students back on Monday, the following, because you lost two days. If you were truly making up 176 days, you'd make up both days. You only need 175. So we're recommending student last day be Friday rather than having, than have to come into Monday the next week. The 11th. The teachers will still work.
So now, now we're going to make last day the 12th. They're going to push this one to here and we're going to waive.
If we have another snow day, then that has to be readdressed.
Yeah, if there's another snow day, we'll be back to, to talk again.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, if there's a snow day, they're actually going to have to go Monday, Tuesday.
May have to come back for Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday. That's exactly it.
So no more snow dances, please.
Well, if you just, you know, can call the day, then you don't have a snow day.
So, so if I have this correct, then the motion should be to, to change the last day of school from Thursday, the 12th to Friday, the 13th and, and waive the return on the 16th for.
And make it a teacher day.
And make it a teacher day.
Come on, yeah.
So, anyone want to just so-move that? I have a second.
I second it.
Great. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I want to go on record as opposing the idea, at the risk of irritating many of parents, including family members of my own house. I, I'm concerned for a couple of reasons. One is, I am philosophically in favor of extending our school year.
No, no, that's.
So when we're shortening it, I, I am concerned. And that will leave a net effect, even though it's minor. And secondarily, it's been my experience as a parent and I'm projecting my personal experience for a moment. There are a number of wonderful, fun days for the children at the end of the year, which makes the productive time for learning limited from my perspective. And so we're cutting back further. There's a compounding impact. So I, at the risk of being the Grinch of, of the school year, I'm going to vote against this. I, I think we should hold it to 176. We owe a duty to our kids to, to give them every day that we can.
You're definitely a fun sponge.
Okay.
I respect you for that.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. So that gets us to our action items and takes us to nine kind of other consent agenda. So we have, we have 9.1 approve the minutes from the regular meeting on the 19th of February and especially on the 21st. So can I have a motion to, actually, we also have 9.2, which should approve the director's orders. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's?
Make a motion to approve it as it's.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Since I was not in the, those two meetings, what do I do? Abstain, say nothing?
You can abstain, I suppose. Yeah.
I think it's, well, it's personal choice, I think.
Yeah, really. I mean, you can review them and, you know, theoretically. So, so if you're comfortable with what was in there, then that's really what you're affirming, right?
Thank you, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Section 10, director's comments. Anybody got it? I think we've had a great discussion. Welcome back, everybody.
I, I have just one comment. I didn't realize that Carol is retiring. And whilst I think it's a one, you seem to have a wonderful candidate, I'm actually saddened because she is really phenomenal.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to say that publicly.
Good. Thank you for, thank you for doing that. Great. Anyone else have anything they want to bring up?
I, I would like a few minutes in executive session.
Yeah, no, I'm planning on that, actually. I, it wasn't on here. Yeah, it is on here, actually, for negotiations, so, so we, we will do that. Great, let's confirm our next meeting dates. So we will meet again as a ord on the 9th. We back to the 7:00 PM time, same, same room. And the CSSU board will be at 5:00 PM on that evening. And then I attend a board chairs meeting once monthly and that's scheduled for the, well, actually, that was actually yesterday. That's interesting that it's that way, so I went back in time and did that. And, hold on, let me see if I have it here. Just a commentary.
At 7, right? But, but we have the common topic at 6, right?
At 6 is usually, yes, correct.
Thank you.
So there was, there was, there was some discussion at the board chairs meeting yesterday around the, the topic of, there sometimes is an impression that the board chairs are meeting together and making decisions and that's far from the truth. Where, first of all, we can't, there's no, you know, there's no like legal entity there to convene and make decisions. However, as a group, you know, we get together and we discuss items that we feel we need to get on our individual agendas because they're common to everybody. Or we discuss, you know, issues we've had, you know, that we try and learn from each other from. That's, that's really, it's intended purpose. So just to give you an idea of, of some of the things that go on there, this is the agenda, agenda from yesterday. It was actually the, the largest agenda I've seen the entire year. There was a lot to discuss. So we discussed in advance of what's going to be discussed tonight, special education consolidation, so kind of a heads up about what's coming up in the CSSU meeting. We discussed very briefly that the tech audit report is complete and we didn't have enough information or time there to start delving into it, but what we discussed was that it's a big deal, there's a lot of information there. It's, it's going to drive work across the CSSU, so there will probably be potentially committee work at the CSSU level and, and a lot of engagement over the next year or so to implement many of the recommendations that that report gave.